Good evening. I call the order of the meeting of the mayor and the board of trustees of the village of Burr Ridge for Monday, May 12, 2025. Deputy Chief Allen, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Francis?
Here.
Trustee Skiappa?
Here.
Trustee Piviza?
Here.
Trustee Snyder?
Here.
Trustee Matal?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Mayor Grasso?
Here.
Everyone's here.
All right, we'll start the swearing in. Judge Pat Rogers is going to do the honors for us. We'll start with our village clerk.
Are you taking photos with everybody?
I don't think so.
Okay. This guy's taken.
Yeah, you're on that.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I in your name.
I, Susan Chow.
Do solemnly swear.
Sowling swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And duly enacted ordinances.
And duly enacted ordinances.
Of the village of Burr Ridge.
Of the village of Burr Ridge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of village clerk.
Of the office of village clerk.
To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability.
Trustee Guy Francis.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I in your name.
I, Guy Francis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Duly enacted ordinances.
And duly enacted ordinances.
Of the village of Burr Ridge.
Village of Burr Ridge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
Duties.
Duties.
Of village trustee.
Of village trustee.
To the best of my ability. To the best of my abilities.
Good luck.
Please say, "I in your name." "I in your name." What does he mean about that?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I in your name.
I, Anita Matal.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And duly enacted.
And duly enacted.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
Of the village of Burr Ridge.
Of the village of Burr Ridge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
Duties of trustee.
The duties of trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Please.
All the best. Yeah, thanks.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I in your name.
I, Russell Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Sowling swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And duly enacted.
Duly enacted.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
Of the village of Burr Ridge.
Village of Burr Ridge.
And I will discharge.
I will discharge.
Duties of trustee.
Duties of trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Please.
One more.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I in your name.
I, Harry Cross.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And duly enacted ordinances.
And duly enacted ordinances.
Of the village of Burr Ridge.
Of the village of Burr Ridge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
Duties.
Duties.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
Of the village of Burr Ridge.
Of the village of Burr Ridge.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the honor. I appreciate this. Yeah, thank you very much. Best of luck with your election, guys, and full steam ahead. Follow the leader.
Yeah, thank you. So, before we go on, I do have to point out two very special people in the audience. One is Julian Grasso. Raise your hand.
Aww.
And Monroe Grasso.
Aww.
Okay, this will take us to item four, the consent agenda. An item shall be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any one trustee or anyone present at the meeting. Those items marked as an asterisk are considered to be on the consent agenda. A roll call shall be taken on the approval of the consent agenda and recorded in the minutes of, as an omnibus vote. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it will be discussed by the board, opened for public comment, and voted upon during this meeting. Item five, minutes. A, approval of regular board meeting of April 14, 2025. B, receive and file plan commission meeting of May 5, 2025. Ordinances. B, approval of an ordinance denying a variation request from section 4K2 of the zoning ordinance to permit onsite outdoor storage of commercial vehicles and relevant attachments and implements to be used for snow removal on a seasons annual basis, ZO-1 2025 variation, Oak Creek Club subdivision. C, approval of an ordinance approving a special use amendment to ordinance A 834-1224 and ordinance A 834-1921 and ordinance A 834-0621 to permit permanent outdoor dining at an existing restaurant, ZO-6 2025, 78 Burr Ridge Parkway Patty Sunrise Cafe. And D, approval of an ordinance amending various sections of the Burr Ridge Municipal Code regarding persons with disabilities. Section seven, resolutions. C, approval of a resolution vacating a portion of the public utility and drainage management at 15W 360 62nd Street and 15W 371 61st Place. D, approval of a resolution updating the village of Burr Ridge Affordable Housing Plan as mandated by the 2004 State of Illinois Affordable House Planning and Appeal Act. Eight considerations. B, approval of an award of a three-year contract to M.E. Simpson of Valparaiso, Indiana, for leaked detention and survey services in a total amount of $77,000. C, approval of various reappointments to village committees and commissions. D, approval of a proclamation recognizing May 4 to May 10, 2025 as Public Service Week. E, approval of a proclamation recognizing May 11 to 17, 2025 as National Police Week. F, approval of a proclamation recognizing May 18 to 24, 2025 as National Public Work Week. G, approval of a proclamation recognizing May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. H, approval of an amendment to the village administrator's employment contract. I, receive and file separation notices for general utility worker George Hovarka and executive assistant Samantha Thames. J, approval of vendor list dated April 28, 2025 for fiscal year 2025 in the amount of 44, $444,458.58 for all funds, plus $234,169.57 for payroll period ending April 12, 2025 for a grand total of $678,628.15. K, approval of vendor list dated May 12, 2025 for fiscal year 2025 in the amount of $317,335.99 for all funds, plus $228,932.97 for payroll period ending April 26, 2025 for a grand total of $546,268.96. And approval of vendor list dated May 12, 2025 for fiscal year 2026 in the amount of $19,392.56 for all funds for a grand total of $19,392.56. With that, can I get a motion to approve the following items on the consent agenda, five A and B, six B, C, and D, seven C and D, eight B through L.
So moved.
Second. Any questions from any of the trustees? Any questions from the public? Roll call, please.
Trustee Skiappa?
Yes.
Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
Trustee Matal?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Piviza?
Yes.
Six zero, the motion passes. That takes us to ordinances. A, approval of an ordinance amending the village of Burr Ridge Personnel Manual. I think you had a question on this, trustee Francis?
Yes, thank you. I had to ask that I have this removed from the consent agenda because back in January when we spoke about these modifications to the personnel manual, I had mentioned about bringing the alcohol, blood alcohol content threshold to 0.0 to be aligned with much of the private sector and other groups, other work groups as well. And I've come to find out now from the village attorney that that may be difficult for certain reasons, and I was wondering if you could explain that to the rest of the board, because there was consensus on the board level that we lower it to 0.0.
That's correct, and I do think there's an impediment to that. Mike, can you explain?
Well, of course, this is a legislative body, and you can set that standard threshold at whatever number. It's frequently, or most frequently, established at a .02%. The Federal Department of Transportation has, for decades, had a .02 for operators of vehicles that require a CDL, Commercial Driver's License. If you test at a .02, you have to be removed from any safety sensitive activities for at least 24 hours. As I said, you can set that level. You do have collective bargaining agreements in the village that operate and reference the DOT standard. Remember, what we're talking about here is being under the influence. Whether somebody is under the influence at a .01, it would be most unlikely that they would be deemed to be so. Certainly, if you operate a motor vehicle in Illinois and you test below .04, there's a presumption that you're not under the influence. But we're talking about a standard of either .02 or .00. You can establish that. I just thought that with the collective bargaining agreements that you have with your bargaining units in the village, that maybe you wanted to consider a standard that's uniform. But there's no law against establishing a .00. It's your call.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
So, it is at .02 now?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, which is consistent with our contracts so far. We could establish a consensus that the board wants 0.0 when we negotiate. We could do that.
Why don't we do that?
I'm in favor of that, too.
Yeah, I think so. Why would we not be in favor of that? And if the law requires us to not do that, then that's not on us, that might be on who's ever making the laws, or the union contracts. So, what need we do, just establish the?
I don't believe the standards in this ordinance.
So, what I would suggest is simply, because this is a personnel manual update, simply approve with an amendment that we lower its the testing, reasonable suspicion testing from .02 to .00, and then also provide direction that staff endeavor to negotiate those elements into contracts where necessary.
Yeah, and just get to the language. I don't know if you could have a presumption at 0.0. So, you'd have to play with the language a little bit. Yes, Guy?
I did have one comment, based on what village attorney Mr. Durkin mentioned. He said that that standard of 0.2 had been in place for decades. Okay, and if you recall, in Illinois, for decades, the standard was 0.10, and it was lowered. So, the trend is moving towards something less.
Right, and there was a day when DUIs were, you tolerate one, two, three.
The message at 0.0 means I can't have a cocktail at lunchtime. If it's 0.2, 0.02, I can maybe have one cocktail.
Yeah.
Or maybe two.
Right.
If I'm careful, you know. The message is nothing.
Okay, so do.
So, you're 100% at work.
Thank you, thank you. Should, do we need a motion on this now?
I don't know that you have a motion to approve the ordinance, but the maker can add that amendment.
So, we do have on the agenda approval of an ordinance amending the village of Burr Ridge Personnel Manual. So, it is on the agenda, but the consensus of the board is that the amendment be added of the 0.0 standard. Do I have that correct?
Right, yes.
So, if someone wants to make a motion to adopt the amendments to the Personnel Manual and add the amendment to the standard for reasonable suspicion testing to be .00 BAC?
Presume that's your motion?
Yes, so moved.
And so, it's Guy's motion?
Second.
And Anita's second. Any discussion of this at the board level? Any discussion from the public? Roll call, please.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Matal?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Skiappa?
Yes.
Trustee Piviza?
Yes.
Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
Six zero.
Six zero, the motion passes. That takes us, good point there, Guy. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
Seven, resolutions. A, consideration of a resolution appointing trustee Guy Francis as president pro temp for a two-year period expiring May 10, 2027. So moved.
Second.
I have a movement, second, any discussion at the board level? Any discussion from the public? Roll call, please.
Trustee Piviza?
Yes.
Trustee Skiappa?
Yes.
Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
Trustee Matal?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Six zero.
Six zero, the motion passes. Congratulations again, trustee Francis, but be careful what you ask for.
Thank you, it's a privilege.
That takes us to seven B. Consideration of a resolution affirming the village of Burr Ridge's desire and support for a unique zip code. I'll just take a parenthetical moment right now. I was elected to this chair in May of 2005, 20 years ago, and while not here continuously, one of the continuous goals that I set, that I believe Mickey Straub set, and the boards tried to set, is to try to get a unique, you know, a separate zip code for Burr Ridge. I would say with internet shopping and internet sales, it's even more important than it was 20 years ago. And I'll let you explain what Evan's been doing to achieve that goal, because with his recommendation, we took it from a local, how about Burr Ridge getting its own zip code type of thing, and go into the postal service, which falls on deaf ears, to much more of a national, much more of a national approach. And it is something I wanted on the agenda so that in our new term here, that it now becomes, again, an underlined goal of mine and this board, to get this unique zip code for Burr Ridge. Evan, would you explain?
Sure, Mayor, thank you. So, as Mayor had noted, we had tried a bureaucratic approach, for lack of a better word. What we did was we basically appealed to the USPS in 2015 to 17 to give us our own zip code through an appeal process, and they denied that. We then appealed the appeal, which was also denied. And when you fail a second appeal, you can't repetition the USPS for another 10 years. So, until 2027, we can't do anything with that agency. Playing around the law, we figured out that Congress, through a legislative action, can establish zip codes through that action. And so, what we've been doing over the last two years is working with other communities like Burr Ridge across the country who don't have their own zip codes either, and we've established the National Zip Code Advocacy Coalition to lobby Congress to, say, pass a law to direct the USPS to give all of these communities our own zip code. This was last successful in about 2007, so it's been a minute, and so we're due. We started with four other towns, Castle Rock, Colorado, Eastville, Estero, Florida, and I think part of the villages in Florida as well. That's grown to about 80 communities at this point. All the total population of those towns is about 4 million people. So, our efforts are growing. We had it approved in the House last year, we had it on the Senate floor at the end of the session, we just couldn't get it over the finish line. We've already got it in committee this year. Right now, I've got the paperwork to bring back the establishment of a lobbying contract between our villages and our communities. We'll also be doing a lobbying trip to Washington, DC, to actually meet with the USPS as well as the sponsors in the House and the Senate later this fall. Based on the fact that we've got 80 to date, Congress has basically said, get it to 100 and we'll get it done. Based on the growth, I feel like we'll hit it now during this Congress, we'll get it to the President's desk, and the Republican Party has been very supportive of these efforts to give more local control, as we've been saying. So, I feel very good about these efforts. This has been, as Mayor said, a not recent issue in our village's history, but I feel like we're finally getting there, like all things. It takes the speed of government to get things done, but I feel confident we're actually going to do it. So, be on the lookout. We'll be adding something to the website, just to have a marker on there in case interested parties are going to be looking at it, so.
Thank you. And then, who's the leading congressperson on this?
Lauren Boebert.
Lauren Boebert from Colorado is leading this, so we wish her luck. You cannot have a separate zip code if you have less than 25 mailing addresses, 25, excuse me, 25,000, where, of course, a population of just over 11,000, so we've always had that problem. But 605 is the zip code for our area of Illinois, and that, there's only about 30 or 40 such 605 zip codes, so do the math, there's a whole lot more available. They can't be used anywhere else outside of the, of our area of Illinois, so there's really not a zip code number problem. And it also will not impact the computers of the US Postal Service. So, there's really no reason to do this other than bureaucracy. So, but I do thank Evan for putting this on a national level. He's also active on the committee so that we actually have our voice present at the committee level, too. And as he pointed out, we're with the Republican President, at least in, and Congress in power, we're hoping that this being led by a Republican will get it done, and Colorado is one of the several places that's, that's being included, so we're hopeful. All right, any questions about this? Any questions from the public? All right, our final discussion point for tonight is under considerations.
We need a vote.
Oh, we need a vote. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution affirming the village of Burr Ridge's desire and support for a unique zip code?
So moved.
Second.
So, we have Russ as movement, Anita as a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion from the public? Roll call, please.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Matal?
Yes.
Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Skiappa?
Yes.
Trustee Piviza?
Yes.
Trustee Snyder?
Yep.
Six zero.
Six zero, that motion passes. Now to the final discussion item tonight. Considerations, eight A, discussion of a village hall status update. Evan?
Thank you, Mayor. As you said, it's a status update. I do not have a presentation tonight. We will have a larger presentation at the next board meeting, which is June 9. There is no second board meeting in April because of Memorial Day, so there's nothing to cancel. We have been working on alternative sites regarding the current village hall, as well as tightening our budget belt on the current building. So, we'll bring a lot of specifics to you on June 9 for further discussion about what the board's directions were, additional questions may be about the future of this facility. So, I just wanted to further inform the public and as well as take any questions you may have at this point.
Do I have any questions right now? Okay, any questions from the public? All right, more to come on this subject. All right, with that, we get to item nine, which is public comment. Does anybody have any public comment? Okay, let the record show, no public comment this evening. Reports and communications, Anita.
All right, we're all ready to kick off the summer events, starting with Armed Forces Day on Saturday. May 17 starts at 10:00 AM right here at the Veterans Memorial. What I want everyone to remember is, if you have any worn flags or unserviceable US flags, you can bring them to the event for respectful and proper disposal. This will be a kid-friendly event. We will write letters to our troops, color, there'll be a coloring table, we will pay tribute to Illinois State Warriors, there'll be a touch, touch a truck, Western Suburban Concert Band, and light refreshments. And Chaplain Major Robert "Bob" Gishel, who has served 23 years in the Illinois Army National Guard, will be there. So, we look forward to celebrating Memorial Day with all of you next Saturday.
Thank you.
Sorry, on the 17th, next Saturday.
Thank you. Who's next? Anybody else? Wait, wait, anybody else? Go ahead, Evan.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items. The first is just an update on the 79th Street Pathway Project. It's basically done with landscaping, so head on out and take a look. Dave did a great job on that with his staff. It looks like we built it from scratch as it goes through the trees, so well done, Dave. Thanks for all your help with that. Flashing beacons will be up soon. We're just waiting on Cook County to force through their permits, so we'll get that up soon. The second item is the Elm Street Project, Elm Street Culvert. Please be advised that if you live on Elm Street or you frequent it, that street will be closed starting June 2 through September. That big project that we've been working for a very long time to get done will be happening in the very near future here. There are a few houses that received some letters with construction notices looking like this. We're also going to be doing a water main replacement and some sewer work in the area as well, so there'll be quite a lot of work going on. But please be advised, Elm Street Culvert will be closed for the majority of the summer through September. We'll be putting this out on our website, Oakleaf Social, et cetera, but please spread the word far and wide about that.
Thank you. Okay, before we close tonight, just a personal note. Sitting in this middle chair, this is the fifth time I've taken the oath of office, and each time has been more special than the first night, and the first night was pretty special to me. Now I have children and daughter-in-laws and grandchildren in the audience, and they showing up tonight, that's special, too. But it is a very large privilege to sit in the center seat. A lot can be achieved, and a lot is being achieved because we have such a great board. We don't agree on everything, but we are respectful, and we discuss it with each other. That is complemented by the fact that we have the best staff, and I'm going to say this publicly, we have the best staff that I've ever been the privilege of having to work with at this level. Evan hears me often say, one of my favorite sayings to him, "I like boring." Okay, we like boring in the sense of things being operated smoothly. We're not the village that's going to We're not the village that's going to be on the 10 o'clock news because there is turmoil and corruption and things like that. Those things, the, you know, the press covers. They don't cover the many, we're not the only ones, but the many great villages that function correctly, and the trustees want to serve the people, and the mayor wants to serve the people. We have that here, and we have a long tradition of that being here. And so, as I also sometimes say, I did not grow up in a village like Burr Ridge. So it is even more of an honor to be sitting here, to be the mayor of this great village. And it is both to me and as a fact, a very special place. So I look forward to another four years working with this board and working with staff. So thank you. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn to June 9 at 6:30?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.